I call this caucus to order.
The purpose of this caucus today is we're going to discuss some issues of the House of Commerce, also Mayor Davenport and Mr. Bozzoni.
From the Business Administrator of the House. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Mr. Cross, and if you want to give us our briefing.
Okay, Councilman Perry, thank you very much. Thank you for having us. I think we do this just about every year, and a little bit earlier in July, but circumstances being what they are, we're happy to make it under the deadline for the meetings in July. As you're aware, the Economy League has been the coordinator for the last 27 years under the Act 47 distress determination, and we are closing in on the final year, quite frankly, of distress determination because of the actions of the amendments to Act 47 back in 2014, setting a time limit on time in the program. I will say, though, that regardless of whether or not the 2014 legislation was passed that put a time limit on, I think the progress Scranton has shown since that time, since 2014 and thereabouts, the initiatives undertaken by the city, both under the recovery plan, under the Amaroso Plan, and just plain under the good government of the city, you would have been coming out, I think, at the same time. So it isn't a matter of being pushed out. I think you've earned your way out of a distress declaration before this time next year. We do meet regularly, as you're well aware, we meet weekly with the council as part of our exit plan monitoring. The exit plan was designed for a three-year exit after the coordinator's requirement to do a financial condition report, which was prepared in 2017, adopted by council. So we are closing on the third year of the exit plan. So we do do exit plan monitoring now. The exit plan had several chapters devoted to different initiatives, different subjects of concern, requirements by the law of multiple-year forecasting, et cetera. So to enact the Act 47 exit plan monitoring, we do meet weekly meetings with administration representatives and council representatives. That's nothing new to you folks, but we meet here every Monday. The city at that meeting weekly reports their cash flow, their city cash position, and the accounts payable positions, something that we then use for, we then use that for monitoring the city's fiscal position. That's been a standard practice of ours going back at least 15 years that I have been the appointed coordinator, and I know for 15 years or so, 10 years before that. We also, our office has been providing since 2008 or '07, monthly cash flow reporting for the city, the city's finance department. We do that for them. They report the end-of-the-month figures for us, and we prepare cash flow. So every month, we prepare a cash flow report for the city. The city also gets from us a cash flow report under the exit plan that they use. The city uses it to report under its appropriate credit agencies, the reporting requirements for the bond issues that the city has. We also do a monthly review of budget-to-actual positions for the exit plan. Yearly, we must review and certify that the budget prepared by the city, and we'll be doing that in the third and fourth quarter, we provide a certification to the city that the budget proposed does conform to the exit plan, and we have done that for the last two years. And we then, in December, or actually in January, we report to the Secretary of DCD our findings that the budget passed was in conformation with the exit plan initiatives. Not necessarily follows the exit plan numbers, because those were cast in 2017, but it follows the initiative of Act 47, which is provide vital and necessary services, eliminate debt, I'm sorry, eliminate deficits. And as necessary, we provide assistance to the city for exit plan initiatives. Perhaps the best example of that has been our ongoing involvement with the Workman's Comp, self-insurance funding, the reserve fund that the city has, that we've been working with the city. The city's done a really good job of talking to LNI and trying to get some of those reserve requirements reduced because of the city's experience under its Workman's Comp Plan and its safety program. The exit plan itself, or the city's strategy for getting out of Act 47 or requirements, there's one last piece that the city could leverage under Act 47. That's the payroll tax. Now, that's the complicated piece in Scranton, because you have, the school district also does a grocery receipts tax. That payroll tax would replace the longstanding and perhaps archaic grocery receipts tax on businesses located in the city, both wholesale and retail. The exit plan allows, and as initiative allows, for the coordinator to work with the city on developing the tax-based information for the city to use in a petition to the county court. That is not a requirement of leaving Act 47. If that fails, you can still leave Act 47. However, it is a tool available only while you're under Act 47. So that is our last goal under the exit plan, is to have the city leverage the authorization to put a payroll tax on to be revenue-neutral and replace the grocery receipts tax. As far as the exit plan going forward, sometime in 2020, I expect to notify the Department of Community and Economic Development, that Secretary, Secretary Davenport, that the city's distress determination should be lifted in 2020. And I will do that before the statutory deadline of August 2020, but it's sufficient time for the department to act according to timelines and their policy for cities that have finished an exit plan period. I believe, and I really believe this truly, that the city has fulfilled or continues to undertake towards fulfillment as best it can, all the initiatives in the exit plan. There are some things in the exit plan that are aspirational, that are recommended, that are guidance-directed. The city will be able to use those guidances in the future. They're simply, some of them are good government, good best practices recommendations. So the, in a sense, the exit plan, while it provides the city with a coordinator under Act 47, post-47, I think the exit plan provides a good diagram, a good recommendations for best practices going forward. Because the goal of the city is not to take a victory lap and get out of Act 47 as though we've done something great. What we've done is restored the city to a normal financial position of a city in Pennsylvania. And I'll be the first to tell you that that's not a great place to be, because you have limited tax base and limited revenues and seemingly unlimited legacy and personnel cost. But having said that, you are no worse or no better than any other city, and the requirements, responsibilities will fall on elected officials of the city and the administration. Matt, anything before? No? All right. With us today also is Mike Carpenter and Jim Rose of DCED, so they'll be available to answer any questions also that I filled in. So I have ready for taking questions for council. Mr. Bozzoni, Mayor, nice to see you.
I know we submitted questions in advance. Besides that, Mr. Donahue, Mr. Gohan, do you have any questions that you would like to ask at this time?
Yeah, I just have one. Mr. Cross, you touched on it a little bit, but would you be able to provide a broad outline of the process that the city would go through to exit Act 47? You know, who must approve it, who must approve of it, the estimated timeline? And are there any other benchmarks that were required to meet in the next year before we exit?
The Act allows for the coordinator, at any time, to issue a recommendation to the Secretary of DCD that, in their opinion, a determination of distress could be rescinded. As I understand it, and Matt's here to help me if I get into the weeds and trip, that's a policy and a determination by DCED. So they will review our recommendation. They would then look at the financial condition of the city. They'll look at their benchmarks, I guess, weighing heavily on the coordinator's opinion, because we're on the ground, and there is a process.
When this started, the process under 199, as Jerry mentioned, started in August 23rd, 2012, is when the date that started all this under 199. So we had to have the financial condition report done by August 23rd, 2017, which would be the five-year time limit. And one of the recommendations we could have made was to add an additional three years, which was the exit plan, which takes you to August 23rd, 2020. So that's like a drop-dead date. Now, if we didn't do nothing, at that time, the secretary issues a determination by law. Okay, so you're done. But what would happen now is, like, we'll see what the progress is with the payroll tax at the turn of the year. DCED will hold a hearing, but would put together a financial condition report based on criteria that's in Act 47. Basically, what's your financial status, what's the outlook for the future on your debt structure, are you going to be able to make your debt payments? And then they would evaluate that, and the secretary would make the determination. So we're looking probably around the beginning of the year to have a report like that to DCED, and then they would set up a hearing date probably after that, and then, I don't think it will go up to August 23rd. It'll probably be sometime in June or something that a determination will probably be made by the Secretary of DCED on terminating the Act 47 status.
So the ultimate decider will be the Secretary of DCED?
Of course, yeah. That was the one who originally made the initial determination back in 1992. You know, they make the order, and then they rescind the order, they'll rescind that order.
All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
A quick question on that. Should DCED decide that the city is not ready to exit Act 47? What do the other options look like?
Well, that would be fiscal emergency. It would be, that would be, it would fall into the different parameters under Act 47 under Chapter 6, you know, but I don't really foresee that happening right now. You know, as we sit here today, if the condition to the city is similar to this, it would probably, the secretary doesn't have much discretion really outside of a fiscal emergency, which is really, again, not being able to make payroll, not being able to pay debt. I would say similar to the situation that the city was in in July of 2012. You know, that type of situation where, you know, the employees were threatened with not being paid, and there was a default.
Okay. Also, sorry, go ahead.
Just to expand on that, I agree with Matt. Matt, I don't see the secretary declaring a fiscal emergency. I have been through two, obviously the one Matt and I referenced back in 2012, when it was, I think, Scranton was in a fiscal emergency situation, and in Harrisburg City, where there was a threat of all the tax revenue being sent to debt service. The defining limits for fiscal emergency fall on the inability to provide vital and necessary services. In other words, no police, nothing, I mean, no, no public safety situation, no health and safety, transportation, commuting things. I don't see any of that.
And we're nowhere near that situation.
You're on another planet. If a fiscal emergency planet's the third one from the sun, you're on the fifth. There's no way you were anywhere near a fiscal emergency. We were in 2012, and I believe that was the catalyst of the progress we've seen to 2019.
I agree.
One of the questions that I had posed to you, I think, a few weeks ago, was, I just wanted a basic update on the city's progress regarding the recommendations and initiatives that have been suggested in the three-year exit plan. I don't expect you to go through those in great detail now, because we have a limited amount of time, but would you be able to report to the council if these recommendations and initiatives have been completed? And if a recommendation and initiative has not been completed yet, can you provide an explanation as to why and what the plan is and the timeframe is to complete that before the city's exit from Act 47?
It was very helpful, Councilman Gahn, that you sent your questions. I was able to, Matt and myself, did sit down with it, and I did write it out, and I think I brought it or I left it on my desk. I apologize for that. But I do have my notes. I did not see recommendations that were not done that would cause me great concern. I think there are some open issues regarding, go through your list real quick, on debt reduction and debt management. I think a debt policy for the city is important. I know the Business Administrator has voiced that opinion several times. The debt policy is more for future councils and future administrations, because the city, as part of expenditure reductions, rebalances debt loads, so they have a level of debt service and forecastable debt service for the budget. But in the past, the city has used borrowing to avoid the hard choices of expenditure reductions or revenue increases. We would not like to see that occur, and I think the debt policy would be structured so that any borrowing would be considered in light of the city's stated policy. That hasn't been prepared. I know it's available in draft, but many cities have that sort of thing, and I think that's just perhaps one of the things that's open, but it's not critical to exit plan. It's more of a recommendation for policy. The workers' compensation funding, those initiatives were complete and they're ongoing as part of the city's workforce safety improvements and trying to lower the reserve requirement for the self-insurance. Pension system funding improvements, they were all done. The pension expenditure was reduced, the discount rate was lowered, the COLA adjustment was sustained by county court, so all those things, as well as last year's infusion of cash into the recovery plan as part of the sewer proceeds, the use of the proceeds, which was part of the plan itself. Some of the governmental initiatives are more along the line of recommendations and things, but I don't see any of those that were not followed or are not being followed. And if they're not being done in the sense that they're not appropriate for the city at this time, I don't see them as stoppers for the city's condition release under Act 47.
Okay. How about the pension fund governance policy? Do you know, I know that has not been done yet, because I haven't seen it come before council, but do you know if that's something that is on the administration's radar?
I'll leave that to Mr. Bozzoni to discuss on the city's actions for pension governance, but that's been an ongoing issue with the different managements of the pensions.
Not specifically, although the composite pension board does have an investment policy relative to the allocation of those proceeds. Just to kind of delineate some of the information that Jerry was just talking about, so you go back to 2014, a number of pretty broad-based initiatives relative to parking. There was a net reduction in debt of 18.150 million, and that obviously includes the reissuance of the stranded debt relative to the use of sewer proceeds, and this was all in a budget document. It's available for everybody to review. Net reduction from sewer proceeds through a number of different issues, 47.8 million for a total net reduction of 65.9 million. Okay, this information is all in there. Now, there was debt issued, the judgment debt, which you're aware of, the PIB loan that was issued for paving, so the net added was 33.8 million, so the net reduction from that point was 32.12 million. So I think that tends to add to what Jerry had just identified relative to the debt management, debt reduction policies. Now, just to point out, too, Standard and Poor's had asked us, well, it wasn't really an ask, it was more of an order, if we even want to talk to them about getting an investment-grade credit rating, there were three policies that they wanted to adopt, a debt policy, a fund balance policy, and an investment policy. So we went through the investment policy. We have a template for a debt policy, and the fund balance policy that I reviewed, I thought wasn't realistic, so I've got to redraft that. So they're going to be coming as well, and I think they're all pretty important. Relative to the workers' comp, there was a letter that was issued to the Department of Labor and Industry on June 26th, which formally requested the release of $6 million in the reserve funds. The calculation, from the city's perspective, has dollars that are in that fund that are overstated. Now, in order to create a sound argument, because Labor and Industry isn't just going to issue a check, $6 million, to the city or allow us to move that money out, we wanted to see it transferred into an OPEB trust fund. And OPEB being other post-employment benefits, so those dollars could be used for retiree healthcare and other benefits. We thought we had a pretty good argument. Obviously, circumstances of recent had changed that situation, so we've not approached Labor and Industry again yet, although prior to some of the circumstances that developed, we were actually in the process of setting up a meeting in Harrisburg. So we'll revisit it. We think we have a legitimate argument, and one of the audit exceptions that are always identified is the fact that the city doesn't have an OPEB trust fund. So, you know, this would eliminate a pretty significant audit exception. Relative to pension, and just to, you know, put more of an asterisk reference on that, approximately 22.9 million deposited into the pension fund. Discount rate was reduced by half a percent, from 7.75 to 7.25. So in 2017, the MMO was approximately 18 million. 2018, post-ded issuance, and if you remember, we issued debt in order to accelerate the reduction in the MMO. It was 13 million. Post-ded issuance, we knocked the MMO down to 10.7 million. And 2019 budget is 10.3 million. So I think we've done some things in order to try and manage that process a little bit better. So I don't want to take anything away from Jerry, but I thought some detail relative to those questions would be helpful.
Yeah. Thank you. Just to kind of look at this from a broader perspective, so the exit plan was filed and revised in June of 2017. Did you compare the 2017 and 2018 actual expenses and revenues to the exit plan projections, and how do those marry up?
We compare those every year with our budget letter. We compare the projections, and we explain that in the budget letter we give to council the differences. We don't try to track down every difference, but we try to highlight the main differences. Some of the ones were the use of, anticipated use of intermodal funds that were redirected to pay for some other parking improvements. We had anticipated 3 million or so from the intermodal to flow through general fund. That didn't happen, so you went from a $94 million to a $91 million. But every year, we do the reconciliation of the exit plan to the budget, and we talk to the administration regarding those differences, and if we feel those differences are not materially affecting the plan's progress, the city's progress, we highlight them, and we explain that it's our opinion that the budget satisfies the intent of the exit plan. So they have been provided every year to council.
Now, Chapter 10 of the recovery plan, you have estimates here from 2017 to 2020. 2019 and 2020, according to this document, we're looking at over $3.5 million surplus. Are we still on track to hit that mark?
We, on our most recent cash flow, I want to say we have, and Dave can help me with this, because he forecasted along with us, I want to say it's a $1 million surplus this year, but it's the beginning of the year, it's the middle of the year, those are tough. The balances, the budgets adopted is balanced. We are working to monitor that every week, literally, or every month, as the budget to actual. But I think that the overall trend is on track for the exit plan. The exit plan required us to forecast 18, 19, and 20, because that's obviously the end of the exit plan's effectiveness or oversight. But whether or not the city is in surplus or deficit is more a function of the current budget, the current operating climate, that's a function of today, not three years ago, when we were looking at that, using historical data. But by and large, the city has the capacity, the capability, to offset any deficits or to use those, any surpluses, to offset expected deficits in the following year. For example, the audit in 2016 showed a significant surplus with a almost $1 million loss in 2017. So those two budget years offset each other, and some of that, some of those deficits could be related to a timing issue with the sewer fund. So the goal of the exit plan is to certify that the city has its own wherewithal, the resources, to avoid and eliminate deficit in the future. What I'm saying is, the choice to eliminate deficit in the future is a governmental function. It'll involve revenue increases and expenditure reductions.
And those numbers in Chapter 10, that's kind of like when the audit is done, it takes a picture at December 31st, the end of the year. When we put this together, when we did this exit plan, we're taking a picture at that time, and what we've seen in the past and projecting into the future. Now, part of our ongoing monitoring, as Jerry mentioned, is our letter from November 16, 2018, to council, where we did the comparison. Those numbers from 2017, when this is adopted, become a living, breathing thing, so there's different variables that affect revenues and expenditures going forward from 2017, which would impact those numbers. That's why we are required by DCED to evaluate throughout the year your budget performance and your cash flow, because that static picture is being changed by variables that are going ongoing into the future. So when we look at it here, we do look and see what the comparisons are, and if there is any variances, we explain them in the letter on why we see, and what we feel that at that time, if the city's revenues and expenditures are balanced, if they're showing a surplus or a deficit, and that's what we monitor. And when we look at it now, we're looking at your fiscal stability based on what happened since 2017, and how it's actively performing as a breathing and living documents going forward. Does that make more sense?
Yeah.
Yeah. So these numbers are kind of static, but we are looking at today, you know, so there will be some variances, because nothing stays the same.
Okay.
And I guess maybe I disagree a little bit. They're not entirely static, because, you know, we update constantly, but based on their evaluation and the timeframe of that evaluation, they're looking at information for a given period of time. So, you know, since we're working on the 2018 audit, the complexity of reviewing your internal accounting reports is, there's a lot of pass-through accounts. So if you look at 2018 revenues versus expenditures, your revenues were 127 million, your expenditures were at 113. But it's complicated, okay? As Jerry had pointed out, you've got a lot of activity in those accounts, and that may not necessarily result in a fund balance. But just to highlight cash position, cash position at year-end, which would have been year-end 2018, was 5.2 million. So, you know, that's reasonably important if you consider what the financial picture looked like four or five years ago or beyond. Now, tracking revenues in 2019 are stable, so, you know, we looked at total revenues so far of a little over 70 million versus expenditures of 53 million. A lot of that, of course, is timing on the receipt of real estate taxes. Real estate taxes, current collections so far, around 90%, which is generally about as good as you're going to see in Scranton. Earned income tax, we have collected a little over 14 million versus a budget of 28.5 million, so we're at 50%, which is pretty good. My concern with earned income taxes is it plateauing. So economic conditions are, have been pretty good, and payrolls have been increasing measurably. It's just, you know, the concern I have in the city is, what kind of increases would we look at, and does that number plateau at some point? If it plateaus, I think, you know, we have an issue because of the inability to look at organic increases in real estate tax collections because of the assessed valuation. But, you know, we're tracking relative to expenses so far in 2019, expenses at 53, a little over 53 million versus a budget of 110 million, so we're at 49%. So, you know, mid-year, and this is information as of July, so we're tracking reasonably well. There aren't any items there that, at least as of July, I think are problematic. But, you know, we have to keep an eye on this, because obviously you don't want to be in a position where any of the expenditure items wind up creating issues within the context of the budget.
Okay.
I just have one question. We talked about that last box to check that we really want to get done. I know something that the council want to get done, that's moving from the mercantile tax to the payroll tax. Mr. Bozzoni, do you think that's something that we can reasonably do on our 2020 budget, since this will be our last opportunity to make that happen?
Let me tell you that one. We really have no choice. The timeline is this year, this year alone. I'll go back to what Mr. Cross said, there are aspirational goals within the exit plan. That doesn't mean we're not going to get some of those goals taken care of before the end of the year. But two of the goals that aren't aspirational are the debt policy and the payroll tax. We have to get both of those things done before the end of the year. So our mission right now is to sit down with the school district and do the best we can to convince them to come on board, because without them, it doesn't happen. So we're fully committed, I know you're fully committed to doing that as well, but it will not happen without them, so.
Right, yeah, that's something that'd just be disappointing, you know, to say the least.
Absolutely.
You know, as we- You know, as we discussed today, you know, our finances are night and day what they were five, six, seven years ago, and, you know, our future success is going to be based on our governmental management from here on out. You know, we paved a good road, but now we have to maintain that road. And that, to me, is going to be a big piece going forward, that we need to use it before you lose it, literally.
Absolutely. And as Mr. Bolzoni stated before, you know, the EIT generally grows organically. If we're in a good economy, that grows, and we're concerned that it's going to be a little flatter this year, but maybe flat next year and still grow this year. The payroll prep tax is exactly the same thing. As the more people earn more money, that will grow organically, and it's been proven in Pittsburgh where they grow 3% to 5% annually. So it's very important that we get that mission done and done this year.
All right. Thank you. I have two or three more additional questions. You mentioned the sewer sale proceeds. I don't know if you'll have this information on hand, but do you know what amounts are still being set aside in escrow accounts that the city might receive?
So if you recall, there were dollars that were set aside for specific purposes. So the capital budget was funded with $2 million. There were also two other funds that were set up or accounts that were set up for specific purposes. $500,000 was allocated to economic development. Most of those dollars that have been expended so far have been principally support the revitalization issue in the downtown and to support the efforts at Scranton tomorrow. There also has been $500,000 set aside for stormwater initiatives. Those dollars outweighed expenditure, and as you're aware, right now, we're in the process of retaining an engineer to support the stormwater initiative, both the renewal of the MS4 permit and advance the concept of executing on the, some of the recommendations and the preliminary analysis for stormwater that was created by Arcadis.
Okay. So is there, can we expect to receive any more money, or has all the money been expended from the sewer sale? The money that was set aside in escrow accounts because of the lawsuits, do we know that?
Well, Dave is describing the proceeds as contemplated in the exit plan. There's additional escrow that I'll let him talk about that was set aside as part of the sale.
Yeah, and the reason I ask that is because when I was reviewing the exit plan, it does say that some of your projections are based on receiving that money from the sewer sale.
We put, in the exit plan, it has the distribution of the 69 million and that there was the additional 14 million or so in escrow that the city could use. We expect it over time to be released, but that was written in the time when the escrows were put in place. I don't know the outcome of the lawsuits and the other things for the 14 million. But the money that was put aside specifically for exit plan initiatives, which is stormwater, economic development, and capital funding, was done. And that was the 3 million. The remainder, I'll leave Dave to discuss the current status of that.
Okay.
Well, and I can't really because it's a sewer authority question, but obviously it's a significant amount of money. Generally, it was to resolve issues related to the lawsuits, but also easement acquisition. I would think that we're all hopeful that there's going to be a substantial amount of money remaining in that escrow account that can be passed back to the city at some point. But I don't have an update from the sewer authority on the status of those lawsuits.
Okay. Thank you. When I read through the exit plan again, and I know we've talked about this time and time again since I've been on council, but one of the themes in the exit plan is legacy costs. And to me, that seems like one of the issues that even if we exit Act 47, it's still going to be a major issue. So you say in the exit plan that you will provide the city with initiatives to foster multi-year financial plans with positive annual financial results, and will include the initial stages of a plan to resolve the city's increasing legacy costs. Can you speak to this and what has been accomplished so far in reducing these legacy costs? And can you provide an estimate on how much has been saved or what you're projecting the savings might be?
Sure. That's, your legacy costs for the city fall in three buckets. One is, and it's significant and perhaps untouchable until contracts are negotiated, which is the post-retirement healthcare costs, which is significant. I used to say 10 years ago, one of our favorite lines was, the healthcare cost for retirees was 7 million, the active employees was 7 million, for a total of 14 million. So you were paying as much for retired people as you were for actives. And that 14 million was nearly equal to the real estate tax revenue the city brought in. So 50% of real estate tax revenue at that time was going to legacy costs. Post-retirement healthcare is a bargainable issue. I don't think there was a stop, put-on awarding as one of the Commonwealth Court awards, the Supreme Court award, I believe. But that's a hard one. So the purpose of the exit plan to address that was the creation of an OPEP trust. The OPEP trust is funded with the money from the workman's comp, which isn't, which is not a legacy issue, except it's a legacy issue of the city's poor record in the late 90s and early 2000s of not paying their bills, of not paying the workman's comp obligation. So that legacy cost could be ameliorated by, as Mr. Bolzoni was talking, using labor and industries, reducing the reserve requirement so that you could free up some of that money. Right now, the city has significantly more money on reserve than is required by the actuarial liability. So that legacy cost, and that's, the exit plan actually funds a consultant to work with the city and has been working with the city. I think he's actually impressed with the city's progress to date. So that legacy cost is addressed. The other two buckets of legacy costs are pension and, geez, I had the second one, maybe it was workman's comp. But anyway, pension, pension is one of the most significant reductions. When we were doing the 2015 recovery plan, pensions were $4 million a year, 2012, 2013. Even when you were in your worst shape, pensions were very manageable. They were $4 million. That was largely because of the Act 44 effect, when you took a 25% discount. It was also related to other things, but that ballooned, and our projections were, by the actuarial, going to go up to 19 million in less than five years. That is now, as Dave says, very manageable because you have taken several steps under the exit plan. Use of proceeds was one. The administration's decision to not allow COLAs as long as you were in severely distressed or distressed status based on the audit generals rankings. The use of reductions, some of the proceeds of sewer sale were used to reduce the expected rate of return. You know, the discount rate, you're down now to seven and a quarter, which was a reach. We thought you couldn't get there five years ago, but you are. You went from 8% to seven and a quarter. That helps you going forward if you don't achieve those in your investment goals, so your liabilities don't grow because of unearned assumptions. The COLA reduction was large. It was a very good hit towards the liability, reduced the liability significantly. The use of the proceeds last year, the use of the 20-some million to cash collateralize that Act 205 loan that allowed the city to put a large chunk of money into the pension at the end of last year, that both reduced the 2018 MMO, which helped cash flow at the end of the year, but it also reduced the 2019 and 2020s. So those are more in line now with the, with a healthier projection for legacy costs. But legacy costs are kind of plateaued now, I think. I think you're learning to live with the overhead of a underfunded pension. It's getting better, but it's underfunded. You're stuck with those legacy costs of healthcare. There's ways around, perhaps for current employees and future negotiations, and the recovery plan has recommendations in there for future negotiations. But legacy costs are exactly that. They're legacy. You are sort of stuck with what the requirements of a larger workforce in years past.
Right. When you bring up healthcare, one of the concerns for me, and I know Mayor Evans cited this concern as well when he was on council back in 2015, was the restoration of healthcare benefits to retirees. And at that time, when we were negotiating, or the administration was negotiating, the contract with the police department, it was explained that the restoration for healthcare retirees would be limited to just six employees hired after January 1st, 1994. But when we looked into it further, and I think the newspaper uncovered this as well, it does not state a retirement age or limit it by name to specific officers. So I don't know if you can speak to this, but is there a concern that in the future, this could cripple the city financially? Because that would be my concern. It may not come within the next three years, but down the road, should we exit Act 47, that bill may come doing. It's a concern for me the last five years. So can you speak to that?
I can't speak to it directly in the context of the exit plan, but in the context of fiscal planning and fiscal management, I've been here long enough that I've seen the city avoid hard decisions to their detriment. Legacy costs are built in. Whether or not they were good decisions or bad decisions, they're built in. They're your responsibility to your employees. They're also the taxpayer's responsibility to their former public servants. So if the legacy costs are there and they're built in, and Dave could talk more directly about the current contract requirements, if they're built in there, that's a liability you bear. You're going to have to look at expenditure reductions, operational realignment, and at the end, revenue increases.
I think there's two things that the city should be aware of as they do go into exiting Act 47. One is the LST. The city now gets $156 from the LST to go to court every year. The city has special legislation where they're allowed to keep that once they exit Act 47 without having to go to court, but as long as their pensions are moderate to severely distressed as defined by the pension law. So once now, as was mentioned here, you know, money has been put into the pension funds and those ratios are starting to increase. So once the city, you know, you can keep that 156 up to the point where, as long as those pensions stay in moderate to the, to serious, severe distress. But in the future, you know, if that market ever gets hit, that's something the city's going to have to address. And yet, the other one is the COLA. You know, that was based on a court decision that the city fought with Judge Mizouni that was based under the Second Class A, and that prohibited the COLAs, why the pensions were actually really unsound. Again, as the pension start, ratios start to increase, that becomes an issue. So long-term, you look at long-term healthcare, long-term healthcare as, or pension, as pension starts, the funding ratios start to increase, you're going to look at these thresholds being hit. So that, again, as was mentioned, when just the decision from the COLA with Judge Mizouni's decision, that saved the city a lot of money in their pension. It probably went down about four or five million just by knocking those COLAs out of the pension calculation. So again, that's something I think, long-term, the city's going to have to watch on the horizon because you've got a revenue source that might be jeopardized and you have an expense that might be, that is lower now going into the future.
Is that provision potentially problematic? Sure it is. I don't think there's any question about that. We had a lot of discussions internally about the impact, so I think the impact is recognizable. Now, remember, the process is generally a trade-off. So there were some provisions that we thought were advantageous, increasing contributions to the pension, trying to manage the disability process more effectively, because obviously that has cost implications as well. So you had a bit of a trade-off there, but I do agree, I think there is some, there is a cost factor there that will be significant for the city. Just to put it in perspective, though, okay, so you're talking about legacy costs. The 2003 budget had a total employee count of 536. 2004 budget had an employee count of 539. 2017 budget had an employee count of 478. 2018 budget, 480. 2019 budget, 488. And I've got those positions delineated if you have any interest in talking about them. So we're working off a much smaller employee base, and yet, the requirement is still to deliver services to an optimum level. So we are in the service delivery business. Employee count is going to be critical in terms of being able to deliver those services in an optimum level. So I said I'd point that out because it is significant enough.
Right. And two more questions because I know we're pressed on time. Do you foresee in the next three years, and I ask this question in light of now the school district with, I'm sure you're aware of their recovery plan, and the fact that in the next five years, if they adopt this recovery plan for the school district, they're going to potentially raise taxes every year for five years above the maximum limit. Do you foresee the city having to raise taxes within the next three years in order to exit Act 47?
Well, that, the question's a little fractured in all due respects. The city is going to exit Act 47, given the assumption of positive action on the part of the Secretary of DCD. There is no inoculation in Pennsylvania under any act, Act 47, Act 94, you name the acts. There's no inoculation of a city's responsibility to fund its current operations, its past operations, and its future operations with its tax base. There is no other way to do it. I have been, one of the nice things about my perspective here as coordinator, I've sat here yearly and tried to talk to councils and mayors about the need to raise revenue. I've been pilloried and talked about in the pseudonym of Pell about raising taxes. Unfortunately, in Pennsylvania, that is what you have to use to raise taxes. It matters not whether the county raises taxes, it matters not whether the school district raises taxes. Your job as city administrator, city officials, is to avoid deficit and maintain current services. Quite frankly, I have the greatest sympathy for the city because you share the same tax base as the county and the school district. County commissioners that won't reassess, that won't maintain a healthy tax base, bear much more burden than those persons that have to increase the millage rate in response to a dead assessment base. You're actively supporting a conversion to a payroll tax. That's replacing an archaic and inefficient and practically punitive form of taxation on mercantile activity. That's a positive, but it's revenue neutral. You have to wait till that grows. You already have one of the highest earned income tax rates in the Commonwealth, so you have very little place to go but raise property taxes. And I don't say that lightly because that's very detrimental to homeownership. We see the rates of rentals and vacancies rising across Pennsylvania. But you're not inoculated against that by any shape or form, by any plan or anyone short of the legislature buckling down and looking at the actual state of the tax situation in Pennsylvania today. I mean, I wish I had the expertise and the ability to simply say, yeah, you do not have to raise taxes ever again. I will say that the actions of expenditure reduction for pension, the OPEP trust, if that generates funds from the sale of, not the sale, rather, but from the good practices of the city in managing workman's comp, the controlling of legacy costs with the current contracts, and when you're entering new contract negotiations next year, with that foremost in mind, rather than trying to get the support of the unions for votes, you get the support of the unions to maintain the current level and the current expenditure reductions, those things go much further towards ameliorating real estate tax increases. But you're not going to get away from increasing cost of business, and you're not going to get away from the lack of growth in your assessment base until the county commissioners reassess. And as Dave said, your earned income tax base is not going to grow until the citizens' paychecks grow, and that's growing modestly across Pennsylvania.
Look at it from a narrow perspective, okay? So every year, we sit down to construct the budget. We're working with an assessed valuation, which is lower than the prior year. That's hugely problematic for one of the principal revenue drivers of the city. So we've been fortunate in that we've existed over the last so many years in a fairly vibrant economic situation where payrolls have been growing. But the cautionary note is, if there is a recession on the horizon at some point, how does that wind up affecting one of your principal revenue drivers? And again, I referenced before the prospect of earned income tax plateauing, and that's in a good economy. So you can take this as a cautionary note. These are things we have to deal with, and I would agree with Mr. Cross, that the fact that there hasn't been a reassessment in some time is very problematic for us in constructing a budget and will be going forward.
Okay. Thank you. Final question. I don't know if you can answer this, but I just want to bring it up because it is like the elephant in the room. What effect will the, what potential effect will the garbage in Act 511 lawsuits have on our exit from Act 47, should the city lose those cases, especially Act 511? Collections continue to rise, but if Judge Gibbons rules that the city is in fact violating the law, what does this do to the projections? Obviously, I'm assuming that you'll have to recalculate, but can you speak to that?
If the lawsuit were to be, if there was a judgment issued tomorrow from county court and that's, and I discuss this oftentimes, there is an appeal process. I mean, there is a I mean, there is a long, you're talking a longer time before the city has to actually do something. The flip answer is that gives you time to start sequestering funds in the anticipation of a negative outcome. You know, the city had lawsuits for the collective bargaining and under Act 47 took years to resolve. And of course, when they did resolve, they were against the city's favor. But there's no way to anticipate what those results are going to be. I will say that the Act 511 lawsuit is, has consequences far beyond city Scranton borders. It affects other cities. I anticipate that there would be a long, drawn-out discussion, both in legislature and in the courts, on that issue. If you want to inoculate yourself again against that, you're going to have to put a lot of money aside because that's a very significant lawsuit. But I don't see how that can be addressed in an exit plan for today when it may not happen for four or five years, if ever at all. I personally hope and think that it will not be decided negatively for the city.
Right. Well, I want to thank all of you for coming, especially Mayor Evans. It's a breath of fresh air to see the mayor here and I know that, you know, we're committed to working with him, Mr. Bolzoni, Mr. Cross, and Mr. Dominus and the rest of Pell. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. I know we ran, we ran a little long today, but this was an important caucus and I figured that we want to get all our questions out and just have a nice debriefing. So again, thank you everybody for coming today. We'll call this public caucus then.
Thank you.
We'll do a five-minute recess and we'll start our regularly scheduled meeting.